Is Brandon coming?
No.
Okay, I'll call it to order, the City Council work session for Tuesday, October 9th. First thing I want to just announce is tomorrow night we're having a meeting and the City Council's introducing ourselves and talking with the architects who are doing the programming for the City Hall concept. It's an open work session, so you're welcome to tell anybody who's interested. They're not presenting anything to us yet, it's us talking to them about what our concepts are.
By clock.
By our clock. Everybody circle that and remember it. And Bruce just mentioned that Pacific Power was intending to have some power outages in November. Bruce is in negotiations with them, that might or might not happen. If you have any other details you want to...
Yeah, what they said is they needed two days, 10 hours without power each. And we pushed back on that, it's going to be November, and so now they're rethinking it and are looking to see if they can do, say, half, I'm sorry, there's two stations they need to do work on. They wanted to have 10 hours for each one. They're looking at whether or not they could do half of the work with the system on and then just do it shut down for five hours, or find other ways to go ahead and split it, so maybe it's, you know, four or five hour increments, or we could do it from like, you know, 1:00 to 6:00 or something, as opposed to from, you know, 10:00 to 8:00. So, we are, they're looking to revisit and do some other things to make sure that we don't have a 10-hour delay, or 10 hours without power on those days.
Would it be the entire city, each time?
Yes, each one.
Okay. Obviously, there'd be more information on that later. Probably the November meetings will know for sure.
Yeah, I would say for the November 6th meeting, we'd be able to announce more. If they're, if we have anything earlier, we'll let you know. But they were looking, we were actually at one time considering like the first or second week of November, but I think that's pushed back because they're looking at the end of next week, I think, to get the results back.
Can we post that on the website when it becomes known?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. I'll call it to order, order the agenda. I need approval.
Boo to approve the agenda.
One second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, our first item is a presentation by the Farmers Market Committee. Actually, it's our discussion with the Farmers Market Committee, not their presentation. Sure, come on up. This is where we have an opportunity to talk to our committees about how they feel things are going, how we feel things are going, positive or negative, or any improvements that could happen, or changes, or whatever. There's the committee. Obviously, Phil didn't get the message to wear black. So, who wants to start? Do you have any pressing needs that need to be discussed, or? I've, you know, I've helped out with the mornings, so...
A lot.
My sense is that things are moving fairly smoothly.
Well, I would just say that this committee works really well together. They're very supportive of, you know, the whole market environment as well as each other. So, we're looking at it. It's a very good group of volunteers, and it's definitely working. We cannot just hand you these, we have to take them, answer questions about where the bathrooms are, and, you know, that's, that is very nice.
I know where the bathrooms are.
Yeah. And where the ocean is.
And where the ocean is, yeah.
So, it's, it's a wonderful committee to be a part of.
Are you recommending any changes in format, or vendors, or product?
I, and I haven't discussed this with the committee, but I would hope that in the future, instead of asking our volunteer to be the secretary, that we could have city staff be at our meetings and take the responsibility of the minutes rather than asking, Stacy is our secretary right now, of asking volunteers to do more volunteer work. But again, I haven't discussed that with the committee, but it's something I felt, well, for a committee to solve, it really would help, because if you're busy working being the secretary, it's hard to be the participant too, and we really want to be here, Stacy.
Yeah. In there.
So, it's not that she's just not doing a good job?
Do you guys have any questions for the committee?
I know we had a couple challenging events this year with turnout, especially towards the end.
With volunteers or vendors?
Vendors, mostly, but I was, Phil had mentioned to me a couple times when we didn't have to set up as much.
Right. Vendors, you're not talking about visitors?
No, the vendors. But I understand, that was the end of the season and things were starting to fail.
You might also be, in particular, talking about one particular day where they were forecasting thunder in the 60s, a 20% chance of thunder showers the next day, and at least some of us discussed that, whether to proceed with market, and we decided not to do information of sales, but just with the merchandise and everything, didn't get, you know, mildewy and wet, and then I gave the vendors the option of coming or not, it was their, it was their call.
Okay.
And so, that day, we had nine missing vendors, and we had no musician, because he had high-end speakers and instruments, he's from Seattle, he travels a lot, and he was just concerned, so it's, you know, that's, that's fine. And it turned out to be a lucky something.
I know.
And looking over the figures for the Farmers Market, it appears that the city subsidized the market to the tune of about $24,000, is that accurate, Lori? I think it was something like $12,000 income and $36,000 was, was what it showed in the administrative anyway. I didn't, I couldn't find any other expenses.
Yeah, well, the total cost of the market in expenditures was $37,988 in fiscal year in 2018.
And that was staff plus some supplies, or what was...
Yeah. And some of that was recouped through vendor fees and market sales, merchandise sales.
There was $12,000 that was recouped.
Yeah.
According to the report you're going to be giving us tonight. So, I just, you know, wanted, you know, we were aware that the city is subsidizing, you know, the Farmers Market to the tune of about, about $25,000, it looks like, then. One of the things that I've heard about the market, and I, the market has been great, you know, it's certainly well organized and well run and well attended. I hear complaints from neighbors who complain about the fact that their parking is taken up, and that not only do they lose some of their parking, but they also lose some of their business, because they, their customers can't get to them, and there's some competition, I guess, you know, that is, that is in there without having the same year-round commitment that they have. So, I think it's something we need to discuss and need to, you know, make it part of our conversation about who suffers and, and is it, do they suffer at, is it a greater good, I guess, you know, even though, you know, some people are having to pay a higher price for the Farmers Market than others.
If I could just add to that, that all of the vendors do pay their business license fee to the city, so that's $75 from each vendor, and I don't have another right, because this year we had like 32 vendors, I believe, as well as paying their daily market fee of $35, unless they pay the whole season, then it drops down to $25 per event. And another thing that I've, that I've considered strongly is, I know that there are parking issues, I think that's just the nature of Cannon Beach in the summer as well, but I think we should keep in mind that it is 16 days a year. You know, it's 16 days a year, it's not a whole lot of days that it is taking up that parking. That's just how I feel.
Has the American Legion ever been approached to allow parking in their lot on those days? Or is, or do people park there anyway?
They park there anyway.
Do they?
Yeah. And the Legion has not expressed any bother about that at all.
Yeah, usually I'm really guilty about that, I just tell them to go with their car.
But yeah, parking is definitely... And we do also open up more parking than we used to in that, in this upper lot, because we're all condensed on the bottom lot, in this upper lot, we tell vendors that they can park there. So, they're not parking on the street the way they used to be, so that contributes to more openings in the, you know, for customers parking.
What do you foresee, in fact, I assume you have somewhat of a trend in figures of people attending, how did those trend this year compared to a year ago and a year before that?
We were up last year, and this year, I just filled in that part, we're up about 1,500 visitors from 2017, that's in the planning report that I'll give you all, the first November workshop.
1,500 over how many...
Over what we had in...
Right, but over how many thousand? I mean, what kind of percentage increase is that? Is that like a 2% or a 10% or a 20%?
I'll bring that information when I give my report, I didn't do that. I just know approximately 1,500 more visitors than we had last year. And last year, we had more than we had the previous year. That is building.
Right. Do you have a trend of what you would expect next year?
I would expect it to be comparable at least, and based on what happened between these two years and the previous year, I think somewhere between 1,500 and maybe more additional visitors. And the other thing that I would mention is that our sales, our market sales, you know, t-shirts and caps and all that is up very much this year, but the sales committee has been like major on that, but our numbers are really up compared to the previous years, of income coming into the city.
It just occurred to me that this doesn't, you know, involve you so much as the council, but maybe you're trying to bring it up. This is an attraction to Cannon Beach, so could it, could motel tax money be spent to support this?
Well, I know I get, I get visitors at the information booth from places like Israel, China, North Dakota, Australia, I mean, I mean, I get them from all over, many more than 50 miles away from Cannon Beach, so...
And we get more and more people who are saying that they planned a vacation, which I always think is, to me, rather sweet, that people are planning their vacation, so to make sure they're going to be here on Tuesday, something, you know, for people to be coming into town, because this one, they look forward to, and they like showing off to their children, a real Farmers Market. And I've had a number of phone calls of people saying that similar things to what Sandy's talking about, is we were there last year and we had a market one of the days of the weekend, I don't remember which day it was, and then we tell them, they're like, okay, we want to be sure that we attend during that timeframe. So, people really do, you know, a lot of people do plan their vacation according to the market events.
I would suspect, if even when you think about the parking, that the businesses in the midtown area feel a bump on Tuesday, too. So, I think that's just a no-brainer.
Well, Bruce, have you heard anything from the local, from the neighbors, neighboring businesses regarding the, this, because, you know, I've heard it from several...
Yes, one of them had mentioned it to me, and then I had asked, you know, some people up the street here, and they all said Tuesday was a lower day for them than any other day of the week during summer. So, they are impacted, they'd say how much, you know, I don't know if it would have been down anyway, but they said the Tuesdays is a lower day.
And yet, Sleepy Monk has told us that, that market day is one of their busiest days.
I can believe that.
Yeah. But the parking kind of counters that, because, I mean, they get angry, people coming in and saying, boy, don't we have a place to park? And then give me my coffee.
Give me my coffee.
It works for a lot of people.
I notice the art parking is a problem, see art bees on Tuesday just going around and around, you know, the future parking. So, if there were any way we could free up some space for art bees in the midtown area, I think that would be nice and good. I don't know where. Maybe, yeah, maybe that's something we could approach the region, could be, you know, have three designated garden spots, not just on Tuesdays.
Maybe the businesses could coordinate their day off to coincide with the Farmers Market, you know, it, all of the Asak Square, anyway, sleep them up, that's all, all closed on, on Wednesday.
Yeah, but not, not that time of year. There's time that the businesses...
Well, but...
Very few businesses are closed during, you know, those months, any days.
But that entire square is shut down Tuesday, or on Wednesdays, let's get you on Wednesdays. The hardware store, the pound, Sleepy Monk.
During the summer, they're, they are?
Parking is an issue.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I ask you one last question? I've heard mention, and I don't remember where it even came from, about the possibility of eventually having the Farmers Market and the school property. Is that something you guys have discussed or thought about?
I don't think we've discussed it, it's certainly, yeah, we just haven't discussed it as a committee. But I think that, I mean, if you think about driving into town as a visitor on Tuesday and seeing, you know, it's a beautiful market that we have, you know, but I think parking would be an issue there also. And from what I, the little bit I've been hearing about this possible new plan for City Hall, at least when we were meeting the other day, it sounded like the architects had some ideas about how to make the market more visible, like have it be right up front, on hand lock, so it's a more, even more visible, because people see it from the street, but don't always know what it is. Whereas if they, if it was closer, it might be something that would be more attractive to people driving by. Just one last, if I could say, this year, we put our, our rat cars in water bills in the effort to attract more local people, you know, a good deal if the local people can just walk to market without needing a car, and I think that's been somewhat successful. So, we would continue, plan to continue to do that, because the water bill goes to the owner, not to the vacation route person.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the City Hall discussion. Bruce?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I really don't have a discussion, since we're having the meeting tomorrow, but during the presentation for the South Wind Improvements Advisory Board, there, I sent you two questions that staff will need an answer to in order to move forward with the programming, and I sent those same questions to the, the board to let them know that, that's something that we need to consider in moving forward. So, I have no presentation other than that, I will be asking you the two questions when we get to that item, unless you want me to ask them now.
Why don't we just do that now, because that's...
Okay.
Oh, okay, I understand what you're saying, because the board knows, has the questions too, and they'll want to ask, answer it.
Yeah, well, my questions will be of the board.
So, are you talking about today, tonight, or tomorrow, or both?
Well, tonight, because, can I just go ahead and, Jimmy, you mind if I kind of just start off?
Sure, go for it.
All right. The, the discussion, as I understand it, from the South Wind Committee, will be presenting a map that they put together, kind of a bubble diagram that shows where certain functions should go.
I'm behind you.
Okay? And then, what my question will be, is because there is a, a particular location for municipal facilities, my question, first question is, will the study for City Hall be restricted to that particular location, or can we look at other locations and then there would be adjustments afterwards as other things came in? So, that's my first question. The second is that there are potentially a number of uses for this property that are being discussed, and there's two ways we can go, because we have to create an entrance, if we're going to be there off of 101, and we're going to have to bring in utilities. And so, one side of it is that for our, the approval of our project, and there's no known projects necessarily, or funded projects, that are going to be, you know, coming along, should we base the entrance and the utilities on just the requirements of a police station slash City Hall? The other is to anticipate what those needs are, and they have to be identified quickly, so the engineers can determine what the requirements would be, to go ahead and say that it's going to be a school of so many square feet or so many students, and 40 housing units, or 80 housing units, or two housing units, or whatever, and then we can convert that to fixture units and the size of the lines and things like that. The, the potential downsides in a referral is that that could have a difference in what it would cost to build there, there's going to be two costs to build there. And I think that the, the answer, I can kind of answer my own question on that, I've asked SRG, who's the company that we're working with, SRG partnership, to give me a price on doing the, doing both of those options, so that we'll have those when the report is complete, December 14th, in that timeframe. So, I guess, if that is acceptable, and just to keep our options open, it costs a little bit more on the study, it won't be significant, but we will have that information. But in order to do it, we have to say, this is what's going to go up there, because you don't want to oversize them, you don't want to undersize them, so we do have to have some decisions if we're going to go ahead and do that portion of the study. George, it looks like you've got a question?
No, I was going to say, I, I think that we should, you know, have both those numbers, but I think the, the City Hall one should probably, certainly be a separate number. As far as, at this point, knowing what's going to go up there, I mean, it's, we're not putting it there, there are other entities involved, so it's going to be pretty hard for us to know eventually what will go up there. It's kind of a guess at this point, so, you know, if it's not going to spend a whole lot more money, it would be good for any other entity to know what it's going to cost, because we're probably talking about a second ballot measure, if we're going to be adding a school, or adding, you know, some other element up there. So, but I would like to see them, see it separate.
Yeah, and if there's, and we can do it, again, just for the facility that we're contemplating, and, because that's all we know is going, and then there's the other side, which is we anticipate, you know, people are trying to put a school there, we've talked about affordable housing, those kind of things. So, if you're going, if you're thinking about doing those things, it's going to be most economical, over the long run, to put the utilities in at the first, with the first project. But I, and I don't know how to quantify that, George, I think that we could probably get pretty close on a school, but I don't know if there's something else, like affordable housing further up there that might be under consideration, how to go ahead and quantify that, you know, for the utilities side. So, but, but we can't do it without an answer, so we have to make an assumption, I guess, and just want to know, if we want to go that route, how are we going to determine what that number is, because they're starting on the engineering in the study.
I, I'm in agreement with George, that I'd like to see the two numbers. I think the project for the municipal buildings would be A, and the amount for the utilities, roads, and access would be a separate number, and it would be a little more of a guess, I can understand that, because we are, we've got a pretty good idea of the school, that's a pretty easy number, I think, to find. The housing would be another number, that probably would be fairly easy to find, and that would be, that would be the number I'd want to look for, those three entities. So, you know, we could then make our own assumptions as to whether that a larger access of utilities, and I think in, just in general, good planning is to make sure a conduit is larger, and plumbing is a little larger than you would expect. That's my thing. Right?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that when we're comparing the two sites, South Wind or the current site, that we are looking at apples and apples. So, breaking down the South Wind with two different sets of numbers makes sense. One, just for City Hall, what infrastructure you need that, for that, and the additional cost that you would experience if you put in these other entities. But that ought to be a separate number, so when we come to compare, we really know what we're comparing, and if we decide we need to go up there, then we know what the total cost might be.
Exactly. And you said apples to apples, and it's, but you explained it very well, but the apples to apples will probably be the building alone, there might, except for, there might be some foundation costs that are different, depending on the site, they both have problems, but there's, that is going to be relatively similar. Then after that, it's going to be cost of providing utilities, and then doing something on 101 would be the upcharge for doing something at South Wind. Now, there's going to be an upcharge either way, because we have to put utilities in, in an access, and the, it just might be a little bit more if we start talking about, you know, more functions going up and these buildings down, and there's ways to plan that. For example, it may be that in the first phase, we put all the water, wastewater, that kind of stuff in for the whole, what ultimately we think will get built there, but we may not have to have as big of a driveway and parking and some other things, you know, to do that. So, we'll, we'll get it down to what is the minimum we'll need, but it will accommodate future growth as we go forward. And if you're comfortable working, I, I don't know who we would ask, but if you want to ask the committee what they envisioned for school, or the school group, CBA, what they would envision, and then we can turn that into fixture units, which determines how big your lines have to be, and then, but I would like somebody to submit and say, this is it, and then we could go ahead and include that, and then somebody set a number for number of units that might go up there. So...
Does this also include, would this, would this estimate also include the potential need to buy access from ODOT and also put in a separate turn lane?
Yes. Yes. Now, the difference is, and Mark, we're a little bit, we land a little bit different, but I don't know if either one of us can really know the answer, probably he does. It may be less initially, if you're just going to build like a City Hall police station, because it's not going to generate as much traffic as a school and bedroom houses or bedrooms, those kind of things. So, it may be a lower cost, it may be a little bit narrower road, but we can make that wider, or somebody that is doing the upcharge can go ahead and do that. We will get it down to the most reasonable cost to put in, or at least prepare or design for, you know, wider roads, if that's what's going to be, a longer turn lane, those kinds of, in utilities, and we'll get to that. But what will, what I think you're going to see is a price for probably two locations on this site, and depending on where you come down on the first question, can we move anyplace on the site allowing for other uses, if we can, depending on how that goes, there'll be, you know, maybe one site or two sites. If we can, depending on how that goes, there'll be, you know, maybe one site or two sites just for the building on the, when you're doing your comparison. And I think it'll fold together pretty easy. If you like up front, or if you like in the back, that's easy, it's going to have, you know, that'll be the cost. I don't see it that much different. And then the difference in the utilities.
Bruce, your second question first, but we went to the second one first, was whether or not we would consider a site other than what's being recommended by the committee. And I would say I would like to have our discussion with the committee before we discuss that.
Yeah. I just want to put the questions out, and I think that's totally appropriate, so thank you.
So at this point, I think I'll move us on to the advisory board, and if you want, yeah, welcome.
You want to do something with a map?
I've got one, so I'm happy.
I've got one there.
They all have one, there's one.
We got it on our computers.
If you want to bring it around, just so you can point it out.
You guys asked us to basically come up with several things for this map. Where the road is, how wide is this road, Mark?
It's a nominal fifty feet.
It's where it's flat. It's straight up to the highway right there. Basically, it's a gentle down slope. And acceleration, deceleration lines would go on both sides of that. But we found the one area, that area was not any impactful or terribly expensive for a lot of elements built in.
Is that the current access, or is it?
No, this is, if you drive down there and just pull off to the side and go really slow, you will see where the hillside comes right down to, and it's pretty carted. And we put the school here, because that's where it's always been. And a lot of the reason for that is there's a natural field right here. So if there's an athletic field, it's a good place to go. It's also a good place to put an seating system to use in case of emergency. That can go down there too, it's nice and flat and terrain actually also. This is where we put all the municipal services that we thought could possibly go up there. I have no idea what you guys want to do with that, but that's where we put it. As far as traffic count goes, the school is going to be negligible. If you put a traffic counter on that school right now, they would barely register. That's just not a big deal. And in case there are two right now, fifty-three, so it's not going to go to K five. So it's not actually massively more people. The affordable housing is over here, a little distance away from everything else. Piece of land that probably would be best used for that. And if it's maxed out at forty units, based on square footage, then that's a number that's easy to get, the traffic stuff. There's all kinds of traffic stuff to show on the traffic count, there are all kinds of permits. The one you're not going to be able to do, Bruce, is this one. And that's the undecided. We don't know what to do with that, we don't know what the future is. And that's why, when this goes across, it's got the enough capacity to cover whatever. And really, if you're going to put lines in, it isn't so much the cost of the pipe, it is the cost of the opening, closing, backfilling, engineering, all that. Some additional four or five inches of pipe is not a big deal. But the money is in the labor and all of the excavator work and backfilling. So I don't, I don't think I get real hung up on this argument about sizing. When we met with the State Highway Department, it sounded to us, they were more interested in getting money from us to buy the access back than there were anything else. So it's going to be about the same size as new developments are in Northland County for the same season. That's what governments, acceleration, deceleration, and turn lanes, is dealing with. So that and buying the rights back for what they bought.
Jim?
Would you envision?
Jim, you want to explain that a little bit?
What?
What they bought?
Yeah, they, apparently, when they put this highway in, they bought the right to never be accessed again. And I'm not even sure anybody knew that at the time, but that's the way they're ensuring to get. So now, they're more than willing to let us go in if we'll buy it back. It isn't so much that they wanted to keep access from going there for all time, this was a revenue generator. So if we pay them some level of money, and they had no idea how much, we can get access back out, as long as it's safe, as long as it doesn't violate any of the terms. This is far enough away to pull it in, and far enough away to pull that in line, that is not an issue. You can go both directions.
Did you look at access to the housing area?
Yeah, you would somehow might come across either here, or around up here, and go over to it, pick a profile line, go around the profile line. This is about, to get back to the undecided area of, what is that, about a hundred feet, Mark?
Yeah, roughly.
Somewhere. And if you're going to put a road into here, the road is going to simultaneously serve both sides. So whichever side you put whichever thing on, is going to be served on separate.
And then you just extend from, like the blue area, follow a contour line, basically?
Yeah. The thing we can't call is what you do up here, we have no idea what will go up.
Did you have any idea where a back access road was going to be? Because you did talk about, on the committee, another road that goes into the property.
Well, one of the times, we talked about coming out right over here with an emergency access. And of course, we still have the emergency access that comes down the other way. Mark Morgans, who was on the committee, who was on the Lewis and Park Timberlands, had talked about the possibility of something up higher. And there is a reason to work with Mark, because at some point in time, we may want to look at sober, we may want to look at some kind of windmills that would go up on that bridge, and we could get access from him probably service that. So, and they're very cooperative.
What would the, so the access from the housing would go from, you talk about the in-between, so that's how they would get in and out of the highway, onto the highway? So there'd only be one access point from the highway, then?
That's correct. And somewhere, maybe two places, there would be a fire truck car. I talked to the fire chief about it, and here I am, or you have, there may be one, help us out. Either there might be one over here, and one someplace up in here.
But there would be potential for emergency exit down in the south corner, southeast corner, or southwest corner. No, I'm talking about, yeah, yeah. Down near the main line.
Where the road is now.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no plan, we have never talked about blocking that one.
Okay.
Jim, what size would those plots be for the houses?
I didn't get into that.
But you were saying about forty?
Yeah, the acreage is enough in the code for forty minutes.
What size would those be lots of, what size, Mark, if you had forty?
Might not even be lots, probably a one or more multifamily developments.
Some sort of planned unit development, I think.
You would not get forty single-family dwellings.
Okay.
Unless they were really, really small. Or like the Mill Pond, that's where.
It might be townhouses, it might be something like.
To me, that's a separate study.
Right.
Yeah, for purposes of this, the forty units is what kind of drives the utility and the traffic part of it. And that's all we need to determine now, whether those are individual lots, or townhouses, or multi-story buildings, there's a lot of, those don't need to be determined yet.
I was thinking, after I talked to Jim about that, is one of the ideas that the old fourplex behind Coaster, that's going to become, what, an eightplex? So five of those?
Yeah, that would.
Would literally fit up there.
Something like, that model would work here very well, or something along those lines.
Five times eight, four and a half of those?
There's some financial advantages going before you. It's easier to find that before you. So there's, that's kind of a target bottom of the lane. But again, that's really a different issue. This was to provide space for the potential usage, yes, or no?
Can I just make another point? I mean, with that, unless you're done, are you done, Jim?
I'm, unless you're answering.
Just another consideration is, when we're looking at the area that's designated as public safety municipal, that's about two point six acres. This site here is about an acre and a half. And a lot of our parking is off-site, and we would have to replicate that anywhere that we go. This building is relatively square, and this does not lend itself to, you know, the square is kind of an efficient building. So what I'm saying is that if we look at this, we may end up with a different building shape than, it may be more expensive, maybe less, not work as good as if we had some more freedom in doing the design.
Well, Bruce, you could always look in here. You've got, you've got options.
But we've considered that still free space.
Which space, the green?
The green.
Yeah.
The green is, to do whatever you need to do. The only thing I think that's cast in concrete is the road being still right here, because that's what's fine.
Right. But again, I think, and I'm just kind of eyeballing this, but would you think the width is about a hundred and fifty feet of the blue?
Yeah, roughly, in the narrowest spot.
Yeah. And that, you know, may or may not work, you know, by the time you put that back to parking and front or stock, or whatever. So I'm just saying that it is, it is somewhat confining the site. If you want us to do that, we can do it, but I would recommend that we have some more flexibility.
Is there any reason that the blue area doesn't extend further south? It looks quite flat.
I just wanted to add, like, it certainly could come further south.
Well, it could come a little bit further south, but you get into a water course there.
Oh, is there?
Fifty feet or so, but yeah, there's room to move it a bit further south. And that water course isn't necessarily a deal breaker, it may just add slightly to costs.
Bruce, was there any, talking all about one or two stories in the house, or an elevator?
We did discuss it. It raises the cost per square foot, and we're still trying to keep it as a one-floor. In one-floor and relatively square would probably be the most, the most efficient. But, you know, we could work more linearly, but this is kind of curved.
I guess, I guess my response to that is, I would hope we would fit it to the property better, because design-wise, square is kind of dull. So, I mean, I would kick in some aesthetic there.
No, no, this, people would be very proud of this building, but I'm just saying from a, you know, laying out this kind of an office space, and having spaces like this inside, and major conference rooms, and things like that, I don't know if it's going to lend itself to being, you know, that kind of a curve building. And then when you're talking about the width, if you have a hundred and fifty, and you put fifty on either side, you know, for parking, I'm just saying, this particular layout is, is, it's like, you know, buying a lot in the middle of a bunch of other buildings, and you have to go ahead and respond to it. And that's, that's your call, if you want us to go ahead and operate with that restriction.
My, actually looking at the, that, the blue property, to me, that's less of a concern, design-wise, than the slope is. There's a slope involved there. So you'd be stepping quite a bit.
If you look at these top of lines going up, you could also switch to the green side and go up.
Yeah, and again, that's, that's the flexibility that I'm talking about, Jim.
Yeah, I, we never said you couldn't go here, we just, everybody wanted to put a food bank and a police station down here. You could certainly, these are pretty spread out top of lines up here, you could certainly go up by there. And get a store open. And you'd have a view then.
We just want people to be able to find us.
Well, you can see it from the highway there.
Oh, I know, that's good.
So from what I'm hearing so far is that the, the location that we should use for the study is pretty open at this point. Is that, is that correct? I mean, there could be the blue area, could be the green area, could potentially even be something else, but we're going to have to give them some direction. So I think we can, you know, maybe have them come back to us and recommend where, you know, where they might want to place it, and have that discussion before we have them move forward. But, you know, at this point, the only thing we know we want to do is City Hall. We're not even sure of that.
And police station, and possibly food bank, yeah.
Well, when we started, City Hall didn't seem like it was on the table, if that's not right. We were more concerned about the food pantry and the police station, which clearly had over here to run. You brought the City Hall thing forward since we started this. So, you know, you can do the adjustments, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The one, the thought about question number one, whether to, to kind of give an overview of whether the blue side, the green side, or the orange side. I think if we went ahead and did all of it, it benefits whatever happens on either one of the sites. So if we were to look at all of the locations that we've got laid out here as a potential site for the City Hall, it also helps the school, when they have a potential choice, and the other facilities that we decide to wind up there. So in that sense, it makes sense to go ahead and look at everything.
And also, anything we did, we would, you know, allow space, or make sure it can work for anything else that would be coming up there. Definitely the school, the green is more amorphous, as far as what it might be, but we will, we will make sure that there's three things can work there. And, I mean, there'll be plenty of time for comment, say that works or it doesn't work.
Certainly looks like, my observation, that the green area looks more beneficial for a City Hall, of its location view. It extends utilities as far as you can go, which enhances the value of the other two pieces of the property.
The one thing we need to also remember is that the school is the reason we purchased the property. So the school is the number one item for going up there. So...
Mark Morgan, focus that mostly.
Yeah.
Sure.
And so, in any sense of what we do up there, that's the primary.
If the case lay out on, but if there's one.
Yeah, and there's not.
If that's what you want to do with the City Hall. So that's kind of what you want. But the other thing I want to stress is, we've really gone as far as we can on this project, until somebody triggers the land use planning to finish, and the actual engineering for highway access. The school can't draw up the grants if they don't have a zone site kind of way to go up the highway. And metered in the city, really. And so at some point in time, you're going to have to step up and get after that part. And if I went to somebody with a lot of money, that would be willing to donate to the school, they're going to say, because it's owned, right, we're not yet, we have highway access, we're not yet, we'll bring it back, but it's yet. They're not going to buy it. So at some point in time, we've got to, I think, put a proposal out, and see what comes back, see what somebody will charge, and do that.
I wonder if Mark could refresh our memories on, or at least mine, on, I know the zoning, some special zoning that we put in place, but refresh my memory on the relationship between the urban growth boundary and the city limits, and the requirements to get this zoned for these various purposes.
Sure. This is in the city limits, but not within the urban growth boundary. So we can, we have zoning on it, but we don't have urban zoning that would allow these uses. You can kind of think of it as a holding zone until we actually have development plans. When we have development plans that are like one step beyond this, that is, the utility, the infrastructure, things are well on their way to being worked, then you can bring some or all of this into the urban growth boundary, because you're making this kind of firm, solid, detailed commitment on how you're going to serve it at urban levels of development. So that would be the difference between the city limits and the urban growth boundary. It's in the city limits, it's subject to city regulations, but we have not yet put it in the urban growth boundary, because we're not yet ready to deliver urban services, i.e. water, sewer, and in this case, highway access to it. That's kind of the difference between the two. You're almost ready, I think, you're almost ready to pull the trigger on the UGB zone change part of it. Jim described it accurately, you need to get some engineering information on that access, and to a lesser extent, the utility component, before that's ready to go forward. They actually could go forward simultaneously.
Is what SRG is doing for us, is that going to get it, is that going to work, or is that closer?
It's definitely closer, and I don't know exactly what SRG's product is going to be, but I know a component of their proposal involves bringing in a traffic analysis that could drive us closer to that highway answer. And they should give us at least something on the utilities. The water and sewer component of this are, I don't want to say they're well-known, I don't know what the costs are, that's something you're probably keenly interested in, but the, kind of the mechanics of how this gets served are pretty reasonably well-understood. The access part, I agree with Jim, I think it's just a matter of going through the motions until we can have that well enough nailed down to proceed with this. So the SRG stuff may get us to the point where we're ready to pull the trigger on the UGB zone change part. You didn't ask, but I think we're talking about a six-month process minimum for that. You didn't ask, but I think we're talking about a six-month process minimum for that.
Are we including the public works equipment to be part of the plan, the South Wind?
You started, you mean moving the yard up there?
Because that was, you know, part of the discussion during our tsunami talks, was that if, if our equipment now is no longer accessible, because it's buried into tsunami debris, we don't have the equipment to begin to rebuild our community. So.
The line now, George?
I'm sorry?
This involves.
Part of it is. The shop is.
I think it's on the edge.
The shop is, is above the line, but the concern there is that the material, the equipment will be stuck up there, because the power lines will have fallen across their access and debris will be choking off the bottom there. I haven't talked about this with Karen much, but I know her predecessors both figured they would be able to relocate at least some of their equipment to South Wind and stage from there, but I, that's not the full answer to whether the whole yard moves on.
That was a discussion quite some time ago about fifty-five acres, even before South Wind.
See, at the time, when they had a community area, they actually approved of that idea.
Yeah. I think, I think that brings up, though, the fact that the emergency component of anything we do up here, I always like to repeat this, is going to be, every building up there should have some sort of definite level of sustainability in an emergency, and also serve as part of the emergency center as it would be. That also brings the fact that if we do go to the point of sustainability with solar and wind, we have fresh water, you know, we've got all kinds of services up there that would definitely help. All the, all the planning always has to include that part.
And, Mr. Mayor, if we want to have that as part of the design up there, I think we need to know that now. Because it's, you know, like, you can't just turn to contingency and say, we'll go ahead and we'll put in solar and, you know, all these other things. So if we want to plan for that, let me, let me talk to SRG and see if we can do a separate element to say, this is what the upcharge would be for that kind of add-ons.
Yeah.
I think it's good to know, so.
Yeah, I think from a practical standpoint, when you're talking about taking conduits from the top of the hill down, do you have any improvements to where probably the police station would be? So that we do do solar and wind up there, that that power could come down right to the police station. Have you, eventually, the police cars are going to be electric. By two thousand twenty-five, my guess is most police cars are electric. They're going to need a place to charge. And they could charge there, because there's not going to be gasoline, not going to be anything down here for a long time. So it would be a way to get cars charged up.
You guys want to guess Teslas? That's cool.
I was thinking diesel.
Pretty cranky.
But that's coming, like a scud missile, so it would be foolish not to have a way to get to solar. And I'm thinking a different solar than would be on the school, so this, the school, gross speed all have solar also, which are directions back. But this should be something to charge up the cars and charge up trucks. It's not that far in the future, and it's all going to be better.
That ridge that is the south property line is a hell of a ridge for wind. So, yeah. Access is a challenge, but can be done.
East line's not that easy.
No, the east line, but that's.
That's easy back there.
Yeah. But that would be talking to Mark, and I know Mark could be one hundred percent behind it. Oh, yeah. So, any other concerns?
That line?
Yeah?
Thank you for the first answer. We'll be, probably send it wherever else is going to go up there. Do we want to get a number from Jim or somebody that's working on the school for what the water and wastewater requirements might be? And then, I don't know if power is going to come involved or not, because I'm sure we're doing that underground, but that sort of thing. And then forty units for?
Isn't this something SRG can give us, like, they've got a handful of books on?
Yeah, no, they can't, but if we say forty units, mix of one and two-bedroom, they'll be able to go ahead and calculate the fixture.
They'll have all that stuff on.
Right, right. So I just need to know which, which combination to tell them.
I would think with the school, you're looking at two separate concepts, is the population of the school and then the traffic, trips per whatever, per day.
And I agree with you, and it won't be a lot of trips over eight hours, but there will be two large load tons that might be a consideration.
Yeah, as far as, as far as things like water and sewer goes, you can look at the water bill and that's like, how much does it double? If you're talking about five, so many students, and you get to pay it by.
I think it's going to be more than that. I think they're going to have more than one bathroom. You know, and it, it, it depends. I mean, Sam has talked to me about, you know, like, separate units, those kind of things, that would be different. So, but, but if you can get us a conceptual number or a design of what it would be, we won't do any design on it, we'll only take the fixture unit count and use that to size. Yeah, yeah, and we'll just use that?
Bruce, I can't imagine it wouldn't be, but I want to make sure that all the utilities are underground.
Yes. Well, yes.
That would be the last word.
Yeah, no, I thought, I had not thought about what the future power requirements would be, because we're going underground. And so that may be a consideration also when we're looking at utilities. And then also whether there's gas.
There's gas.
Yeah, but whether we run it up. Yeah. I'm just saying, yeah, I'm just saying, but all those things would factor in. And also, we're not looking to, like, if the units are over in the yellow area, we're not pricing to go and get something over to that yellow area. We're pricing to get to City Hall, and then we go ahead and we stub in, and then anything that comes after, we go ahead and build out the rest. So, you know.
And those costs would be assigned to that project.
So the, anything, any of the utilities going to the school then would be assigned to the school to pay for?
Yes, or we had.
Well, the schools are right across the street.
Yeah, and if, and if that works out, that's fine, but if there is any additional, you know, paving or anything like that that's required, that, that would be, be on them. I agree, probably the sites and the way that we would lay that out is probably going to have the road in front of the, what do we call that, orange or brown area? I think that most of the things would be there, but again, the utilities would maybe, we would stub them at the middle, like, if it was the orange area, and then it would be their cost to go ahead and run it to their locations on the park. So we're not going ahead and giving everybody free utilities and roads. That's as far as we would go.
One, one last thing. One of the things we tried to do, this is one of the things we thought we were supposed to do. We tried to impact as little of the site as we could possibly do and give all the services that were needed. So we could have pushed out a lot of color, stuff, give up what Mark wanted, or two hundred bucks.
As big as he could get.
Yeah, two hundred bucks. Yeah, we backed away from that, but there were other areas on here we could have used, but we tried to pull at the minimum and keep the nature of the site overall close to what it is today.
Thank you. Yeah, good, okay. Thank you.
Would it be useful if we were here by five?
Yeah, sure. Thanks. Okay, for our last item, Lori, during our financials for the fourth quarter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. So tonight I have the final fourth quarter financial report for the fiscal year end, June twenty eighteen. So I'll kind of probably concentrate on year-to-date amounts, just because that's what the final position is regarding our finances. The first section there, as you all know, is the cash position, and it shows the cash for each fund. Our total cash on hand at June thirty, twenty eighteen is four million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars. And that was up from the prior period that ended June thirty, twenty seventeen, by two hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars. So it's always good to have an increase there from the prior year. The next part up there at the top, the little green section, is our outstanding debt. We paid off principal on the debt this year that amounted to three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, leaving four million, twenty-five thousand still outstanding. So we'll start with the general fund. As you can see on page two, we have the detailed revenues for the quarter and year-to-date, along with budget numbers. Our total revenues for the twelve months ended up at five million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And if you just compare it to the budget that was appropriated, you see that we did not quite hit the target. However, if you look at the two grants that we had in there that were quite a bit of money, the OWEB grant and the TSP funds, those were not realized this year. And so if you take that out of the equation, you come up with five million, eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars that you would hope to realize. And so we did, and we actually exceeded that amount by two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So I feel good about, you know, not quite hitting the, the real target, but if you just factor those in, it's a little bit better situation. On page nine, I'm showing you the top revenues again. I know you're used to seeing this from the prior year. Now I made it the top ten, because I just thought that was a little more catchy. I added planning revenues in, and I just combined all the planning revenues to come up with one revenue stream. So the top section here, the top ten for twenty eighteen, obviously, our room tax is still our number one revenue at seventy-three point three percent of total revenues. And everything else is falling in line pretty much the same way it did last year. I forced parking lot maintenance down by putting planning revenues in, so you can see there that those top ten revenue streams comprise ninety-six point nine percent of our total revenue. It's five million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So the other revenues are grants, and we had grants of ninety-three thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars this year. And grants and donations, I guess I should say too, because that's, donations and grants are kind of the same animal. And they're not part of our top ten, because it's not a stable revenue source. It fluctuates from year to year, you can't really always count on receiving a grant, so that's why that's not included there. The grants and donations, HRAP had forty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-four this year. Just a donation of four thousand dollars came in, and we had grants, one grant, twenty-four thousand, six hundred, and another for thirteen thousand. So if you add up all of those, that's about eighty-eight percent of that ninety-three thousand revenue stream. And then the rest of our revenues are just small sales and fees. And that adds up to sixty-nine thousand, so you can kind of get the relativity of our revenue streams and, of course, room taxes. All our eggs in one basket. But, so that kind of talks about the revenues in the general fund. Expenditures, none of the departments exceeded the budget, so that's a good sign. Our ending fund balance is at one million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. And that's roughly about four hundred thousand dollars less than we ended up with in two, twenty seventeen. And you'll remember, we made that four hundred thousand dollar payment to the general reserve. And so that's about the difference in fund balance. So if we hadn't, if we decided not, if you had decided not to make that, we would be in a relatively same position with our fund balance. I guess we can move along to the other funds other than the general fund. Just about all the other funds hit their targeted revenues, with the exception of portable housing and the building department. The building department almost made it, they were short two thousand dollars roughly. So that's good. I mean, we want to hit our targeted revenue expectations. Also, as far as expenditures go, we were okay in all the funds, except for the RV park. And you remember, we came and asked the council for an adjustment to use contingency. We still ended up going over budget. So it was only, it was like in the three thousand dollar range or something. Yeah, thirty-nine hundred dollars, so I don't know if we'll get a letter from the state. It's only thirty-nine hundred dollars, but it's a possibility if they look at our audit report.
The revenues, the revenues could exceed that much?
The revenues were up by.
They were up pretty high.
Hundred and twenty-four?
Two hundred and, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's one of the problems.
So, yeah.
We just had a meeting with Escape Lodging, is that our accounting systems don't, it's like two fax machines and they're going. They don't, they don't connect. And that's that when we set a revenue and we set an expenditure level, you don't exceed those, or you don't get below those under the, the fund accounting. But in financial accounting, if you sell more, even though the cost of sales goes up, that's good, but that doesn't, you know, easily convert for us. Because they just don't want to see that number over on, on that expenditure, even though there's a revenue offset. So Lori and Becky are, you know, working and trying to find a way to go ahead and sort that out and allow us to make decisions, kind of either a hybrid system or something, but sometimes we would have to say no, even though there's money there, because of the way the budget is set up. And there is.
We can always adjust the budget, though.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I think fuel, the fuel costs are driving this really significantly.
Fuel and cost of inventory are two things that are really throwing it off, and that.
So we want to concentrate on that more next year when we're budgeting. I'm going to get with Becky and do a little bit more analysis, if you will, and really kind of try to nail that down a little bit better, because it's kind of gotten away from me, I guess, a little bit, but, you know.
We're talking about, you know, modifying it so that when we get a report, the cost of inventory will be on it, so we know that number.
Right, for budgeting, so we can get good numbers in the budget, so.
There's something else that, you know, we talked about doing with the chamber, where they would come and do a presentation, or we would have a discussion prior to budget about what the plans were for the upcoming year, that kind of thing. And what I will be doing later would be recommending that we have like a single workshop, and we have that with the chamber, and we have it with Escape Lodging, because those are our two biggest partners. And it doesn't work to bring them in at the same time they've got every committee and everything else, and everybody gets ten minutes. And I think that all of us would be there served if there was more discussion, you know, and talking about these kind of problems and that kind of thing, so that the, you know, management would be in a better position, and the council's oversight will be able to say, yeah, I know that this is going on in each one of these, these organizations and that sort of thing. So we see that the increase in communication for both of them will benefit them, benefit us, and I think benefit the community.
And this is in addition to the, for the chamber, in addition to the four quarterly reports?
One of the four quarterly reports for the chamber is the April meeting. We will have that, so we don't have to have five. But, and then once that's incorporated into the budget, then we start reporting in what we did, and then we kind of get around to April and we're pretty much done, then we'll be making decisions for the next round. So I don't see more than four.
Lori, in looking at the, the fund balances on the RV park fund, it appears that it generated about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the city this year. And is, that's pretty typical? Or it's been more than that, right? It's been more like five hundred thousand? And is, that's pretty typical? Or it's been more than that, right? It's been more like five hundred thousand in the past?
What's, what do you mean? Oh, the increases to fund balance?
Yeah.
Um, well, we could look at the budget here to see, but, um.
And that's after all of our cost, right?
Well, we remember, we did spend some of it on the utility upgrades as well, so that, you know, obviously is a use of the fund balance. But, um, let me look here. So historically. Yeah, it's probably three hundred. Some, it's just different. Some years we've had some capital outlay, so you can't really just say every year we're gaining this amount, but.
Well, we need, on average, we wanna take those capital outlays out of there, because obviously it's money we don't have anymore, that we had long enough, we had it there when we needed it for capital outlays. So it ended up in the long run not being a benefit, not being a profit.
Revenues back in two thousand and eleven were one point three million, and they kind of stayed in that range until twenty fourteen, where they went up to one point four million. Twenty fifteen was a really good year at one point six million.
This is total revenues before costs.
Yeah, so.
We, and we don't know how much Escape Lodging is making, right? We don't have access to information to know.
They're only making what we pay in their management fees.
But we don't know what their profit is on it.
We don't know the profit, do we?
Well, yeah.
But we do know what we pay.
We know we pay them, of course, but we don't know how much they're making, so.
No.
I'm just trying to think of the value of the property and, you know, whether or not, you know, that we're getting a decent return on it, or whether there'd be a better return somewhere else.
Okay, the other thing I wanted to note was the recycling fund. I looked at the past four years, and revenues are not keeping up with expenses in that fund. So we're having, we have a decreasing fund balance going down, and so it's maybe important to kind of keep an eye on that.
Where do we get our revenues from in the recycling?
We get it from the recology. They pay us fifteen percent of the cash receipts from their fees to the sanitation customers inside Cannon Beach.
They just pass that through to us. I mean, our, people are paying it in their bill.
Just like Pacificor or the electric, you know, there's an upcharge on that, because they pay us a franchise fee.
So it doesn't, our revenues from the recycling fund do not depend on how they sell the things that are recycled? In other words, their markets, because their markets are going down, we, are we affected by that in terms of revenue?
No, it's a separate, we're funding our recycling station through those fees. Whereas it's different with our electric franchise, we don't have any kind of operation related to the electrical service. And so that money comes straight into our general fund as discretionary revenue. What the council has decided was to use that recology franchise fee, or we call it a surcharge here, to operate the recycling center. And it's been a little more, it's been costing more than the revenues that are being generated recently.
So why are the, if we're getting fifteen percent of the fees that are being paid to them, uh, why are, why are they going down? Why is it going down?
No, they're not going down.
Because our expenses are going up?
Our, yes, it's the other way.
Okay.
Expenses, it's getting harder to recycle these days, and for the cardboard operation, it's, um, I don't know, but anyway.
We just okayed an increase based on that argument by them, so.
So, just wanted to, you know, um, so if you go to page six, we'll talk a little bit about present room tax. You can see that our total revenues citywide went up, room tax revenues went up eleven point zero nine percent over the last year. So it's a pretty good increase.
What page you on, Lori?
Uh, page six. And you can see the revenue stream from motels and hotels for the year were three point seven million, and the short-term vacation rental portion was five hundred thousand roughly. That kind of separates out where that comes from.
And the, the numbers from the seventy percent and one percent are pulled out of here, are they not? They're not included?
No, this is everything. All room tax collections.
Okay, all, okay.
Yes, no matter which fund it goes into, it's the total. Page seven, you can see the tourism and arts fund summary for the year. Council approved expenditures of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Now I'm down at line twenty here. We had a fund balance at July one twenty seventeen of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. We brought in three hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars from the seventy percent of the one percent tax. And then we subtracted the distribution, so at the end of the year, we have a fund balance of two hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Page eight is just the, the detailed revenues compared to the prior fiscal year, if you're interested in that. We've shown good gains from the prior years. You can see that very little unfavorable numbers here, so we're, we're having good increases from the prior year there. Page nine, I kind of went up with that already. And the finale, page ten, is our fixed assets, things we constructed during the year or purchased, like vehicles. I showed you the prior year as well in comparison. I sorted it by the highest cost items going down. We spent five hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars on fixed assets this year. Pacific Forest Main Rehab, that was one of the larger projects. And there are two ongoing ones, line ten and eleven, the Ash Street Water Line, so that will, that will be going, you know, we're doing more construction there. And the sand filter bed media is a continuing project in the current fiscal year. If you look at the line four at the top, the street paving, that was the paving that we capitalized, and that's when we turned the gravel roads into paved roads. Now, there was more paved, paving done in the road department than just that sixty thousand dollars. So there was an additional one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars spent on paving overlays, which is a maintenance item, so that's why you don't see that here.
There's no, nothing showing here for RV capital outlay, RV park.
We didn't have any in the current fiscal year ending twenty eighteen.
Yeah, we did have previous year, and we do have installation of wireless and some other projects for RV park this year.
Okay?
Okay.
Is that everything?
Yeah.
Any more questions?
She's out of pages.
That's all there is. Thank you very much, Lori.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay, I'm gonna, for the good of the order, first thing, I have a question from Colleen, I think. Does the council want to discuss committees in general at work sessions now that we have met with them all? Although one-on-ones where we've met with them and talked about their growth, whether we wanna just move that now to general work sessions or continue with the idea, I don't know.
We, we talked about having a discussion about the e-prep, once we had an emergency manager on board.
Right.
But other than that, I don't know that. Everybody seemed satisfied with the committee work.
I think it was very helpful to me to have the committees come and talk to us. I don't think we need to do it every year. I think every other year kind of plan might work really well, or just spread it out more from now on. Unless there's a committee that has some big concerns and they wanna have a meeting with us, I, I don't see any reason to fill our schedule a whole bunch more.
I agree. I think that what we, what we done is, is enough to cover us for, for a while.
I think, they need to understand, though, if they feel a need, they seek direction from the council for freedom to that, they should say we wanna be on a work session.
Several of our committee members have expressed to me that that was very helpful. So, and very comforting to know that we've had these meetings. Having been on those committees, I.
We have not asked any of our committees for another end report, which we would've by now, or should've by now, if we were going to continue this all through the next year again.
Right.
So since it sounds like we're not, that's.
We're busy not.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, I will adjourn. Thank you.
See you tomorrow at five.